I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on Monday, November 14, 2016. And we'll start it with the Boy Scout Troop 64 and Cub Scout Pack 64 will lead the Pledge of Allegiance, and Councilmember Osborn will provide invocation. Please stand.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Thank you, boys. Before I start our prayer, I just, I had a quick little quote that I thought was, was good for our kids to hear and good for our nation right now. It's something that President Lincoln said long ago during the Civil War. "May our children and our children's children to a thousand generations continue to enjoy the benefits conferred upon us by a united country, and have cause yet to rejoice under those glorious institutions bequeathed us by Washington and his compereers." Now, we know Lincoln was going through tough times, but right now is a time to reflect on what really matters in our life, so please bow your heads. Emily, Father, we thank you during this time of Thanksgiving for the blessings you have put upon our lives and our city. We thank you for our citizens, city staff, businesses, and volunteers. We thank you for the nonprofits who exist to make things better in the lives of so many, and we thank you for giving us the wisdom that our communities, families, and our city is successful and thrives when each of us take the responsibility to make it so. Lastly, we pray for wisdom, healing, success, and health over our newly-elected leaders. Let their decisions be of your wisdom, and let your cloak of protection go out over our military and public safety. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, troop.
Thank you. Boy Scout Troop 64 and Cub Scout Pack 64, we would really appreciate you coming to our council meeting and saying the pledge tonight. So, thank you very much. Let's give them a round of applause.[196.31][196.31](APPLAUSE). Thank you. You can go back to your seats now. I hope somebody got a picture of that, that's all. Did we do that?
Mayor, yes, we did get a picture of that.
Oh, good. Thank you very much. Wouldn't want to miss that. Okay, we're at the dais now, all of us, so we're going to start with the communications. And the first communication item is a presentation by the Litchfield Elementary School District Superintendent Julian Lean, who will give an update on the recent activities and accomplishments throughout the district. Welcome. Is it, is it green? Can someone give her a microphone that works?
Give someone an education.
Sorry about that.
And you can bend that to however you want.
Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Dr. Lean. I'm the Superintendent of the Litchfield School District. Thank you for having us here tonight. Just would like to introduce a couple people who have joined me this evening. We have our Board President, Mr. Steve Yamamori.
Steve, you back there?
Board Member Danielle Clymer.
Way down there, clapping.
Board Member Sean Husmo. And Assistant Superintendent Dr. Heather Cruz. And Superintendent Intern, Mrs. Jeanie Grohaki. Who was Gregory Stipp's second-grade teacher. With my daughter, so, you know.
Would you all please stand at one time so that we can see you all, so we can give you a round of applause? Thank you.
So, this year, the Litchfield School District is excited because it is our 100th year celebration. So, if you can, if we can go to the next slide, please? I don't know who's, who's doing it. So, our centennial celebration will occur in February of this year because we are partnering with the City of Litchfield Park for our celebration. We've included a couple pictures to remind you of some of the history of our district, what Litchfield Elementary School District, what the original Litchfield Elementary School looked like prior to many, many renovations. And currently, it is most updated with a new gym that was built by the WPA, as well as, in the right, you can see that Mabel Paget was our very first teacher. We also have a school named after Ms. Paget. Her husband did work for the Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company. She also served as the lead teacher, and also taught Sunday School. So, she was a very respected member in the community, and we're certainly appreciative of all the great teachers that came before us. So, we will be partnering with the City of Litchfield Park in February for their 100th year celebration because we were all sort of founded for the same reason. The Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company, as you know, could not get the long staple cotton from Egypt any longer, or Egyptian cotton, and had to find another place. We were the other place.
Lucky us.
Lucky us, lucky us. So, Paul Litchfield was sent out to develop a kind of business where we would harvest the cotton and ship it to the Goodyear Tire and Rubber plants. I didn't realize till I moved out here that cotton was in tires, but a lot of it is. Didn't know that.
Not old enough, that's why.
No, I'm not old enough, that's why? Okay. Now, I don't get to, not a lot of people say that to me anymore, Madam Mayor, so I appreciate that comment. I appreciate that comment. Next slide, please. We have 15 schools. We just opened Verado Heritage Elementary. School number 16 is tentatively planned for the 2018-2019 school year in Sadea. We have 11,310 students, 1,494 employees, and we've built nine schools in 15 years. So, certainly, you're all aware of our rapid growth, and we're gearing up for some more, particularly out in the western portion of the district, in the Verado area. Next slide. Many of our schools cross municipalities. As you know, we're the Litchfield School District, but we have three schools in Goodyear. We have Western Sky, Palm Valley, Mabel Paget, and then the next school at Sadea will be, I believe, a Goodyear school. So, we cross a number of municipalities, and we're eager to work with our city partners, and we appreciate the substations and police on campus. And as you know, that there was an incident where that became a very important partnership when we had a gentleman try to enter campus with the intent to do something against the rules, and the officer was right there to handle it. So, it was awesome. Next slide, please. As you can see, there are lots of symbolisms for our district. We use LESD for Litchfield Elementary School District, where if you see in the top quadrant, certainly our focus is learning, excellence in all we do, service to our community and development, both for students as well as staff. So, we're always constantly trying to improve the things that we're doing and trying to do it a little bit better. Next slide, please. We offer customized programs to meet the needs of very diverse students, and we know that families have kids with different needs in the same family, and we want to provide that all at our local elementary school. So, our newest program is the Traditional Academy Program, which we were able to kind of push out to all our schools. One of our original schools was Palm Valley, where that program started. It's an opportunity for kids in each grade level to seek more rigor and within a self-contained classroom, and we do that kindergarten through sixth grade, so kids can choose that. We have our honors program for our middle school accelerated students, special education programs. We have a medically fragile program at Litchfield, where students who typically needed to be in a private placement, that we were able to build our own program for those students and being able to meet their needs and saving the district about $300,000. So, and we don't have to have our kiddos on a bus for a long time because the program was downtown. Next slide, please. This is our budget. You can see about 57.9% of our budget goes into instruction, and certain portions of our budget cannot go into instruction. For example, food services, that's, that's one where you're like, well, charge an extra dollar for lunch, and you'll get all this money for education. But they will not allow us to use food service dollars above indirect costs, which would be like utilities, space, that type of thing, in our general, in our general education program. So, any profit in food service has to stay in food service, to give you an idea of the many, many rules that we have. So, certainly, it is always important to put as much money in the classroom as possible, and compared to our peer-average districts, we have a low administrative cost and a relatively high instructional cost in the classroom, dollars in the classroom. We are the highest-performing elementary school district in the state. Our AZ Merit scores were directly on point in comparison to comparable districts, so we hope to be in the top 10 again in the state. And as you can see, we, we greatly exceed state averages and, as well as peer-group averages. Next slide, please. We start, this is a picture of our most recent rally, where the folks at Christ Church of the Valley actually let us use their huge, huge sanctuary, and also provided all the special effects for us, where we had a whole rally for all of our staff. That's the first time we had ever been all together in one place because we never really had a place big enough to hold all of us. So, that was very exciting. And Mission Believe was an effort that we started a number of years ago, actually started by one of my directors, Megan Duplain, where the idea was that we can't really give teachers a lot of money at this particular time, certainly raises. So, what are things that we can do that doesn't cost anything but makes Litchfield a special place to be? And that's where Mission Believe came from. So, when we look at our own behavior, we ask ourselves, what does my behavior look like when I believe in my colleagues? What does my behavior look like when I believe in my leaders? What does my behavior look like when I believe in my students? And what does my behavior look like when I believe in myself? So, certainly, we try to shoot for those behaviors. And when folks do a really nice thing, that we send them rockets. It's a rocket with, "Thank you for doing whatever great thing that you did." Now, I never really thought this was going to catch on, but it has. Where, was at a school the other day where there's a night custodian who really wanted to show me on her cart of all her cleaning materials, the number of rockets that she got from teachers who were so appreciative of how clean their classroom was each morning when they came in. And she had a lot of them. She had a cover. They were taped everywhere. So, and you see that quite frequently, where folks are displaying their rockets because they're thankful that someone noticed that they did a really nice job. So, so if you hear folks talking about Mission Believe, or if you see a rocket ship in relationship to the Litchfield School District, that's what they're talking about. Next slide. Here's some of our most recent recognitions. Megan Duplain, who also started Mission Believe, was the Association of School Psychologists Administrator of the Year. Our Director of Special Education just became a board-certified behavioral analyst, which is evidently like a very hard test. Pete Kovats, Casey Bayer, and Jody Gunning, they were the First Things First 2016 Champions of Young Children Award, and these all occurred probably within the last month. Next slide, please. Some examples of Goodyear schools shining. Here we see A-plus recognition for Western Sky Middle School. Western Sky Middle School is also a national blue-ribbon school. Next slide, please. Palm Valley has had the focus of what we call the Inclusion Revolution, where we train teachers, hire staff members, to look at including our special-needs students in the least restrictive environment. So, anytime that we can have our special-needs students in the regular classroom, that, that that's something that we really want to focus on. They are certainly, all students are part of our community. You can see here's a therapy dog. I think that's Oliver, who's working with the children. We do extensively use therapy dogs to work with children in our special-needs programs, and some of the things that you'll find at Palm Valley is what we call reverse mainstreaming, where we may have a self-contained classroom of children who have profound disabilities, and we send regular ed. kids in to the classroom to be buddies. So, it's, it's mutually beneficial. We also have kids coming out and going into the regular classroom, but we want that door to swing both ways, and everybody likes to play with the therapy dogs. It's just, I even bring them when I, on Career Day, because you know, nobody wants to be a superintendent on Career Day. So, you gotta, you gotta jazz it up a bit. So, I was really only getting the kids that didn't get their first choice. You're like, superintendent? What's that? So, had to bring the therapy dogs. First, they thought I was the vet, but, but, but they liked the therapy dogs, and they were pretty excited. They come in and hear about the program that's in their own school district. Next slide. Here's our medically fragile class, our new class. Sometimes, in school districts, these are the children that we don't see. Children typically who have to go to specialized schools away from their peers because of very severe and profound medical conditions. These children cannot be around their peers because if they get sick, it can be very, very hazardous to them, to their health. So, when we do some kids in the classroom, some buddies, we have to make sure that they are well, that they are well-hand sanitized, so they can go in and share that time with their peers. Next slide. And for our voters, our Palm Valley Cafeteria recently opened, a new cafeteria. What was special about that is we turned the old cafeteria into a gym. Palm Valley has never had an indoor air-conditioned play space. The PE teacher there is very creative in using the very large storage room that they have for the PE equipment. So, this is a really nice place for the cafeteria. It's off of Palm Valley Boulevard, really nice space, also for the community to use, so we're excited about that. And the kids at Palm Valley are really excited that they're inside in a nice, air-conditioned gym. Next. We have our Pebble Creek Performers that come to Mabel Paget Elementary, so we've established a really nice partnership with our Pebble Creek community. Next slide, please. We had our Odyssey of the Mind winners from Western Sky Middle School go on to the international finals. I believe, it was, first it was in Michigan. I'm not, I can't remember where they went last year. They, they won our state competition, and I think they placed in the top 30 of the Odyssey of the Mind international competition. So, it's almost like Rube Goldberg, where the kid, like, they have a problem that they have to solve, and they have to put on a presentation about how they resolve, how they solve that problem, and carry all that stuff with them wherever they got to go. So, they loved all the stuff and did a really nice job. Next slide. Here's an example of service to our communities, and you can go to the next slide also. Mayor Lord, maybe you remember that? When we, Western Sky and Mabel Paget were recognized as being the top donor schools for the Juvenile Diabetes Association. Now, the guy in the white shirt is a big NFL football player, who I cannot remember his name, but down in the right-hand corner, he, those are his two Super Bowl rings. He's actually a diabetic that they, that found out he was diabetic while he was in the NFL. They actually give him his insulin injections on the sidelines. The trainers do. Still don't know what his name is, but I remember, I mean, I did at one point. I just, you know, that's just not really important to me. But, now, now, my son could tell you right away. My husband could tell you right away, but I can't. But those, in the bottom right, those are his Super Bowl rings, which he let me try on. And he was, he did play in the Super Bowl here in Arizona, I believe. But they're huge, meaning the one on the left is like my whole finger, to give you a little bit, like, he's freakishly large. He's, he's, he's huge. You know, it'd be massive. So, those are pretty big Super Bowl rings, in case, I don't know, I never saw Super Bowl rings before, but they're pretty big. Next slide. And here's kudos to our chief in Goodyear, in our work with the schools and their substations, and so Goodyear cops made our day. Next slide. Oh, participating in our youth sports with the city. Next slide, please. Participating in our reading challenge. Thank you, Mrs. Osborn, that had an awesome time. And Mrs. Manzo's class at Mabel Paget won last year, and we had our third and fourth graders participate at most of the elementary schools, except Western Sky, which is a middle school. Next slide, please. And some of the challenges for the district. There is a national teacher shortage of just teachers in general. So, if you can't find any of them, you certainly can't find quality ones. Unpredictable growth in the West Valley. We did see some voter apathy, though not in our most recent presidential election, in past just school elections. And then, our state with education funding. I don't know if they're ever going to reform it, but you know, our state's got a little problem with education funding. They're just a little slow on uptake there, so hoping for more money. Proposition 123 really helped. Thank you to our voters. We did use it for employee compensation, so we could keep those quality teachers and classified staff. Next slide. We know that teachers are the foundation of a strong educational system. Even Santa Claus knows that. See, at Verado Elementary School, Santa has sent his reindeer to school. And as you can see, are the Boy Scouts back there? Yeah, you never want to talk about Santa in front of kids. So, they are walking in line. That is taken about 6:00 a.m. in the morning in front of Verado Elementary School. We're not sure where they're going, but makes a good story. So, and they are walking in a very nice line. Next slide. I think that's, I think that should end it. All right. I'd be happy to entertain any questions from you.
Superintendent Lean, thank you so much for the presentation, and always the council has something to say, so I'm just going to pass it on. Yes, they're right there. Councilwoman Vazillo.
Yeah, I know firsthand how great your school is. I've got two granddaughters, as you know, that go to Palm Valley Elementary School.
Very nice, well-balmed-granddaughters.
Oh, thank you. Yes, yes. I, yeah, and I can see the growth over the years that they've had over there at the school. The programs that you have for the kids are great, and I know you always put the kids first. So, again, I, again, I know how firsthand how great your school is. And I'd also like to say that I believe it's Friday. I will be there twice, 10:30.
Oh, the Thanksgiving feast.
Thanksgiving feast with the, with the girls. I think 10:30 for the first grader, and I believe it's 12:30 for the fourth grader. So, looking, looking forward to that.
There you go. Actually, it's pretty good.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking forward to that. I was there last year, the same thing. The only thing I ask is next time you do, and I really enjoyed it, when, I think it was with the mayor at the time, where we actually served, what was it? We served lunch one time there, remember?
We served breakfast.
Yeah.
No, no.
Was it breakfast? We served breakfast one time there?
If you want to come back and serve any day.
Hey, you know, I, I enjoyed it. So, again, if you ever had that opportunity again, sign me up. I'm in, okay?
I'll be sure Mr. Schwackey contacts.
Okay, make sure he does. I love that.
You know, we need somebody to wear the turkey outfit, too. You know, we got costumes.
Hey, I've been, I've been knowing to put different outfits in that, so I'm good to go there.
Carrot, little tomato.
No problem.
Be up for that? Okay, grapes. Okay, just checking.
Councilwoman Stipp.
Dr. Lean, it's always a pleasure to see you.
You as well, Mr. Stipp.
Our, Dr. Lean's daughter and my son went through school together, so it's always great to catch up. But one of the things that, as long as most of your board is here tonight, you know, from a city perspective, the quality education is so important to our economic development. And, and I know that your focus obviously is on the children, which is, as a parent, that's most important, but know that there is second and third-order effects to what you do, and the minute that that starts to slide, we will start to feel it. So, we greatly appreciate the cooperation between the school district, Dr. Lean, and us, and the programs that we're able to do, and if there's things that I think we can do to further strengthen that, I think we should always be looking at partnership opportunities. So, thank you for the work that you are doing as well in supporting Dr. Lean and her, her vision and, or your vision together, but it's so critical to the success that we have as a city. So, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor.
I'm just really going to echo that. I think probably, great public schools. We've got a lot in Goodyear, and your district is absolutely spectacular. So, thank you to your board and to, to you. And we all know, that I've been here a long time, you guys are doing more with less every time, and, and so I, I think that's important for the citizens to know that you guys don't waste money. All this that you do is you make a lot happen.
People from Pebble Creek in here, when you're saying that, we don't waste money? I just want you all to hear that.
They don't waste money, legislature, and it's the next generation of leaders that you are providing and, and good citizens. And I echo what Bill said about 100%, that, you know, when people are looking to locate, they're going to be moving with families. They want good schools. That's number one priority when you look for a neighborhood is, you know, where are my kids going to go to school? So, we've got a great resource. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Osborn.
Well, thank you. You know, we go back a long ways, and to the people.
That's why when she said I was young, I was.
First of all, you know, I want to congratulate you and, and your district and the board. I think that you have a lot to be proud of. I'm proud to have your successful school district in our city, and I think that, that really bodes well for our city, and, and it's something that we're all proud of. And I will have to tell you that I was in Palm Valley today because the winners of this year's reading challenge is, are now getting, yes, and today was the first one, and it was your first-grade class, Ms. Gozen. She, they, they won, and, and next week, we have another one, but I can't tell who that is yet.
Okay.
So, I'm very proud of your district, and, and I'm thankful to see the growth, and will be wonderful to see that, that next school that will be coming here. I will give you fair warning that, as my four children that went through your district, I have a almost two-year-old grandson, and you will have a teacher that will say, oh, God, it's a God, it's another Osborne, where are they all coming from? So, you know, we.
I'd say, good Christmas presents from Osborne Jewelry. You know, I mean, you know, if it's that much of a compensation.
But I, I thank you, and I'm sorry that it's a constant battle at the legislature for the funding that you guys need. And, and I always, you know, tell whoever I can that education is something that we definitely need to be supporting. Thank you.
Councilwoman Campbell.
Well, I'd like to just thank you and your staff for taking care of our children and doing such a wonderful job at it. We're very proud that we have an A school. It's an amazing feat and we know how hard everyone works so that we do accomplish that. It's a lot of fun to come and serve in your cafeteria. I love it, even if I have to wear that hairnet.
Yep.
But that's okay. David always finds me to dish up something. But thank you so much and, and I appreciate you doing the partnerships with the different groups throughout our city, and that's a wonderful way to build a strong bond and to keep us strong as a city, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Councilwoman Holman.
It's always hard at this end of the line, I know, I don't know what happened to this screen, it, it bloomed. And I, I, to him an appreciative, and I've watched your district grow, and it's, it's a hard job to keep the excellence with the growth. I mean, in limited funds, you put those three elements together and you, you have a challenge and are doing very well with it. I also wanted to congratulate you that you have a strong board behind you. You know, that's one of the struggles many of our school districts face, is that there's a lack of understanding of how important that position is to the success of our schools. So, congratulations to you as well for taking the time and caring about our children. Let's not go there.
That's not much.
So, thank you.
Dr. Lean, thank you so much for coming and thank you for the academic achievement. The council has, has talked about everything else that your school has done. It's certainly nice to have a star in our community, so thank you so much. Round of applause here. Our next communication item is a presentation by our, communication item from the Recreation Superintendent, Michael Beadle, who will provide us with a preview of the 2016 Home Plate for the Holidays Community Event and Festivals. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Mike Beadle, I'm the Recreation Superintendent. I'm here today to tell you a little bit about an exciting event we have upcoming at the ballpark called Home Plate for the Holidays. I brought a flyer along for you to take a look, but it really is a great event and it's really a one-stop shop for holiday cheer. It's gonna take place on December 3rd from 5:00 PM to 8:30 PM. And we'll have a number of awesome activities out there, so we'll have forty tons of snow being delivered out at the ballpark. We don't have a whole lot of snow in the valley, but you can come get it at the ballpark on December 3rd. And so, we'll have snow out there, we'll have an ugly sweater contest, so bring your ugliest Christmas sweater and wear it out and try to win a prize. If performances are your thing, we have a number of different singing, dancing, caroling performances from the Anderson Institute of Music, so they'll be out there performing traditional holiday-themed music to get you into the spirit. If lighting and decorations are what give you joy, the whole plaza will be lit up with lights, decorations, and we'll even have a ceremonial tree lighting at just after six o'clock, so you can come out, get pictures, get your holiday photos out there as well. One other thing to note is we did get a letter from Santa Claus this week, and he let us note that he is coming to Goodyear this year.
Good.
So, he'll be coming to Goodyear at about six o'clock to our event, and he'll be there to take pictures with the families and also hear from all the good boys and girls of what they'd like for Christmas. So, that's very exciting for that one, make sure you come early, because Santa is pretty popular this time of year, so we'll just make sure you get there early so you get a chance to, to meet Santa.
Sure.
Overall, I mean, I think it's gonna be a really exciting and fun event for everybody. We'd love for you all to come out. It's a great way to just get it, to kick off the holiday season and, and really get in the holiday spirit.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Michael. All right, let's go down now is the time for the citizens who have any, would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item. Are there any speaker cards on non-agenda items?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Anybody in the audience would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Well, then we'll go forth, and will the city clerk please read the consent agenda item six point one through six point seven by title only?
Item six point one, approved draft minutes of a special meeting held on October 7th, 2016, and a special meeting and a regular meeting held on October 24th, 2016. Item six point two, adopt resolution number sixteen dash seventeen sixty-two approving the second amended and restated development agreement for Los Ventanas regarding the development of an approximate one hundred and sixty-acre parcel generally located at the southeast corner of Perryville Road and Yuma Road, providing for authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out intent of resolution and the second amended and restated development agreement for Los Ventanas and providing for an effective date. Item six point three, accept the urban area security initiative grant award of twenty thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars awarded by the Arizona Department of Homeland Security to the Goodyear Fire Department and authorize the city manager or designate to execute any contracts or other necessary documentation, including budget transfers and authority to carry out the intent of the purchases. Item six point four, accept the urban area security initiative grant award of fifty thousand dollars awarded by the Arizona Department of Homeland Security to the Goodyear Fire Department and authorize the city manager or designate to execute any contracts or other necessary documentation, including budget transfers and authority to carry out the intent of the purchases. Item six point five, accept five quitclaim deeds from Sun MP Investment Properties LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company for portions of several existing roads within the city center airpark development. Item six point six, accept grant funds awarded by the U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Fest Partnership Program to the Goodyear Police Department and authorize a budget transfer in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Item six point seven, approve a request from Mark Russell, owner agent for OPB Restaurants Incorporated, doing business at Oregano's Pizza Bistro for a permanent extension of premises, patio permit for liquor license number one-two-zero-seven-A-one-one-four. Oregano's Pizza Bistro is located at one-five-two-eight-zero West McDowell Road, Goodyear, Arizona, generally located east of the northeast corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Could I ask one question, Mayor, please?
Yes, Councilwoman Campbell.
Regarding six point two?
Did somebody come up from staff and answer her question on six point two?
Is this the last development agreement we've been waiting on?
Yes, it is.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you very much.
All right. Yes, Councilman Pizzillo.
Just a question, just a quick question. On six point seven, on the Oreganos, isn't that already done? Or is it, is it the fact that they can't sell liquor in there until this gets approved? Because, because when I ride by, it looks like the extension's already finished.
I think Sue's gonna answer that question.
Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, yes, it is complete. They can't serve liquor in the room, so they have elected not to use it until it's approved through the state. The application process for an extension of premises is a little bit different. They submit their application directly to us. You'll either, well, you'll give your recommendation and then we send the application to the state and they approve it. So, it's, the timeline is a little bit less for this, but yes, they, they cannot use the room for, to serve alcohol in. They could have chose to, they could have chosen to just serve food, but the staff person I spoke with said that they were choosing not to do that.
Thank you.
Wait a minute.
Michelle Laurie, economic development director? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, you received that information. I've actually eaten in that room before and they are serving in that room, but they ask you at the front, are you going to be having alcoholic beverages? They will not seat you there until this is, it's a state requirement that they have the expansion, that they have that covered. So, they just are not, are asking folks, if you're going to consume alcoholic beverages, they'll seat you somewhere else.
Just, just another question, would you typically apply for that as you're putting the permit in to do the expansion? It almost seems like the, I, I don't know, it just seems like it's, something just doesn't make sense there, that you would apply for the permit before you did the expansion, so that it lines up, once it's done, you have the permit and you can serve, so there's not this.
The staff person I spoke with, it was, explained to me that they waited a little bit too long to submit their application.
Which is common.
Okay.
Maybe they didn't realize the timelines they were facing, but when I initially spoke with her, she didn't think they'd be using that room until it was approved, but apparently that's changed.
Okay, wait a minute.
But they did know that they could not serve alcohol.
Okay.
This is on the same subject, Councilman Stip.
So, it would, it would appear to me that in our checklist of things in our development continuum, that question one should be, do you have a liquor license? Question two is, have you filled out an application before we even issue a building permit or at the same time? If we're supposed to be helping our businesses, this is not the way to do it. A, B, I cannot believe that the state requires them to, for a five-hundred-square-foot expansion to come back and get another liquor license. I mean, that just blows my mind that we have a state that requires that, but since that's the state legislature, we can't control it, can we do something on our end that we can add to the checklist to?
Would you like to address that?
To get this done?
Mayor and Councilmember Stip, absolutely. We, you know, as these things come up, we learn from them and it's something, especially for a restaurant-type use, we can just have that as a matter of discussion on the pre-apps, so, yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sue. Then could I have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I heard it from Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Campbell. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passed a seven-zero.
All right, so let's go to the business. The first item on the business is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the La Jolla Vista planned area development for parcels four and six. So, I'm going to open the public hearing, and Joe Schmidt, long-range planner, will present. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor Loretto, Councilmembers. As you noted, this is a request for a PAD amendment for the La Jolla Vista PAD, which is, consists of, the project itself consists of a total of one hundred and ninety-eight acres, but this is an amendment on only a portion of that property, parcel four, which is twenty-two-point-four-five acres and is located, I'm just gonna get the mouse moving, nope. It's at the northeast corner of Citrus Road and Lower Buckeye Road, and parcel six is located at the northwest corner of one hundred and seventy-third Avenue and Lower Buckeye Road. The area around the property is, consists of single-family homes in the Sweetwater Estate subdivision, one-acre lots, and that's to the north, and then the Cotton Flower subdivision, which has lots about fifty to sixty feet wide to the northeast. To the east are single-family homes in Seen Lomas on lots which range in width from fifty to fifty-five feet wide. To the south, there's undeveloped land that includes a future high school site, also the El Cidro Residential Development, the Cotton Commons Residential Development, and Citrus Bridge Residential Development. To the southwest is the Levinson one-sixty Planned Area Development, which is a combination of commercial and residential uses, and to the west is undeveloped land consisting of the future Prodera Residential Development. The existing zoning for the property is, is a planned area development that was approved in October of 2005 for the entire one hundred and ninety-eight acres. Parcells one, two, three, and five are, have an underlying zoning of R16 with a minimum lot size of sixty by one-twenty, and it was proposed for development with that-size lot and seventy by one-twenty-five as well. Parcells four and six were designated as court home parcels that could have up to eight dwelling units per acre with a two-thousand-square-foot minimum. Parcel seven, on the east edge of the property on one hundred and seventy-third Avenue is an elementary school site, and parcel eight is immediately adjacent to, to the west, and that's a public park site. The development was approved for a total of six hundred and ninety dwelling units, and the Platts for parcels one, two, three, and five were approved in March of 2007. The proposed zoning is an amendment for parcels four and six only. What is proposed are single-family detached lots of six thousand square feet with a fifty-foot minimum lot width. They are also requesting a side setback to be reduced from combined five and ten to five and eight with thirteen feet of minimum between the homes. Parcel four has seventy-two lots proposed, and parcel six has sixty-one lots proposed. There are no changes recommended or being requested for parcels one, two, three, and five, as no change to the elementary school site or to the public park site. There'll be up to five hundred and fifteen dwelling units total allowed on, in the project, which is one hundred and seventy-five less than what was originally approved. This is a depiction of the parcel four and a conceptual allotting pattern as to how it might be laid out. It has two open space parcels, one tot lot, and includes a thirty-five-foot landscape buffer along Lower Buckeye Road and Citrus Road. Street connections to the site are from Watkins Avenue on the north and to one hundred and seventy-seventh Avenue on the east. Parcel six is located in the southeast corner of the, of the property. It's a, was shown here with a single, sixty-one single-family lots planned, two open space parcels, and it as well has a thirty-five-foot-wide landscape buffer along Lower Buckeye Road with a staggered perimeter wall. We have recommended that there be no lots fronting on Magnolia Street because of the school park site on the north side. This parcel will have access to one hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue and a street connection to Magnolia Street. One of the concerns that we have raised in the past is the garage dominance that can happen when you have small-width lots of less than sixty feet. But to minimize the garage dominance, we have worked with the developer to require certain design guideline enhancements, and here are some of them. The streets will have a landscape parkway between the curb and sidewalk. All homes will have a front porch, courtyard, or living area forward of the garage by at least five feet. At least fifty percent of the homes will have porches and, or courtyards. All homes will have enhanced driveway paving. The garage doors will be recessed and architecturally enhanced. The garage doors may not occupy more than fifty percent of the building face. The front setbacks will be staggered by three feet. The garages will be set back a minimum of twenty feet from the back of sidewalk, and living areas, front porches, and courtyards may extend to ten feet from the front property line. We hope with, by the combined effect of these design enhancements will break up the streetscape and, and minimize the effect of the garage dominance. In terms of functional impacts, it is within the traffic area for Luke Air Force Base, but over two miles from the sixty-five LDN, although we do recommend disclosure of that. Likewise with the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, it's within the air traffic area, but two and a half miles from the airport noise contour line, and disclosure is recommended there. Fire department will service this project from the Yuma, Station one-eighty-four, Yuma and Wildflower, until a new station is constructed in West Goodyear. The police department would serve this within the existing level of service. Solid waste and recycling be provided by the city of Goodyear. Water and wastewater service also would be provided by the city of Goodyear. Water and wastewater service also would be provided by the City of Goodyear. The impact will be less due to the fewer number of units and the lines to be constructed by the developer under a cost recovery program, which we've done a lot of work on. And then schools, it'll be served by the Avondale School District and Aguafria High School District through existing schools until new schools are built, although school sites are in the vicinity. With respect to public participation on this item, a neighborhood review meeting was held on September 27, and about 10 persons attended who mostly asked questions about the project. At the public hearing that was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 19, there were about 23 persons at the hearing. Eight persons spoke before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the project. There were not really objections to the proposed change itself, however, there were strong objections voiced to a requirement from the 2005 zoning action to provide a pedestrian access point to Durango Street. The residents of Sweetwater Estates expressed their concerns about increased traffic through the neighborhood, lack of sidewalks and street lighting, liability associated with harassment of residents' farm animals, potential increase in vandalism and theft, a lack of privacy, and need to restrict homes along Durango to single-story, and lack of public notice being provided to adjacent properties. The residents have been advised that the change proposed to the La Jolla Vista PAD that's under consideration right now did not involve the pedestrian access point and is, would not necessarily be appropriate to address at this time, in consideration of such a change would require a separate processing and also an amendment to the development agreement, which requires that to be installed. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted by a vote of six to zero to recommend approval of the amendment for parcels four and six, and staff likewise is recommending approval of the change as requested. The applicant is represented by Mr. Steve Earl, and he also has a brief presentation to make when you're ready to hear that, unless you-
Go ahead and bring him forth now.
Okay. Mr. Earl?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. For your record, my name is Stephen Earl. My address is 3101 North Central Avenue in Phoenix, and I am here in behalf of the owners of La Jolla Vista. Phil Miller, who has been with me from the beginning of this, many of you have been with us from the beginning as well, prior to 2005, he's likewise in the audience, and I think he's intimate with every detail, if I know how to operate this thing correctly. We are here for a PAD amendment for just parcels four and six. This overall dotted line shows the full extent of the essentially 200, excuse me, yeah, 200 acres, Joe referred to 198, approximately 200-acre master, residential master plan from before the Great Recession, and we are only dealing with a small portion of that, which had been designated in the original approval for a court home product, and I'll kind of show you the intent there, and why we would rather reduce the density and go to a product that is, while small, is independent of each unit. There are many reasons in the marketplace today why new homeowners coming into the market, whether they're millennials or empty nesters, prefer to not have their cars all accessing the same driveway. That's a, that cluster product is an excellent product. It's used primarily in urban situations or maybe infill situations where you're trying to shoehorn a development into an area, but here, where we have the opportunity with a little more land, it's pretty hard to convince buyers that they ought to have eight different homes or at least six different homes accessing on the same driveway. That's a downside. They're all two-story, they have extremely small yards associated with them, but it doesn't mean they want less quality. They simply want all the benefits of single-family, even though a little bit smaller. So, as Joe indicated, all but these two parcels have not only been approved, but they've actually received final plat approvals. And we have been working with the council for years to get the infrastructure necessary to build not only this project, but many others in West Goodyear, and we have a proposal now before the city and the staff to have at least five of those owners step forward and build critical segments of the water and sewer lines, so that we can finally kick this area off, which has kind of been the big chicken and egg problem out here. But as we move forward, phase one is essentially half of this development, and so while most of it's already plotted and the park has already been designed and the school site's been designed, in order to work out that infrastructure planning, it's important to have an acceleration of sales with different lot sizes and builders. So this gives a very brief comparison between the existing court home product that's been approved and the one we're now proposing. As Joe indicated, that density of those lots, achieved lots that were up to 7.4 units per acre, and we're dropping that more than in half to 3.1, 3.3. So an estimated yield of 309 units is going down to 133. Maximal height is staying the same, but we now have one and two-story homes, not just all twos, and the minimum lot size per unit is going from 2,000, 2,500 up to 6,000. This is the court home product, and I don't want to suggest this is the only product, it's just I drove around to products that I had been associated with and took pictures of. So their recent product, one of the downsides of taking photographs of recent product is all the landscaping hasn't matured and grown in. So they look a little stark, the north, I mean, the top photo may show a little bit more landscaping maturity, but you can see that the design, no matter how pretty you make the front of these court home units, they all access onto a driveway. So you have four and, or six to eight units all functioning on that driveway, and then they have their own independent backyard. We believed, in working with staff over many months, that a highly-designed, single-family home that went well beyond the city's current design requirements with what was called enhancements, would be highly more marketable to the current buyers in the marketplace. And those features, as staff has indicated, and we have agreed, are things as like porches, where you can see the elevated porch in one of the photographs, you can see the courtyard in kind of the bottom photographs. All of these homes, as Joe indicated, one of the key features of all the homes is the garage is not forward. There is no garage dominance of these homes. All the homes have home-forward designs, whether that's a courtyard, a porch, a porch or the house itself is always forward of the garage. Another nice feature of this is if you have a visitor coming to your home, they can actually park in your garage, in your driveway or in front of your home, whereas one of the downsides of a court home product is you generally have to park away in guest parking. These are other designs, we just kept showing the various design features by the roof elements, the window elements, additional new features on the garage doors themselves, so that they are, pop out better and have columns next to them. This is a site plan of how those units would look. You can see that they have a very healthy setback from the perimeter streets, that's their, that's in addition to the backyard. So we've designed them in with a 35-foot landscape setback, in some cases, two rows of trees. And then the units themselves, they're all separated detached homes. They all have their own porches in the backyard, as well as porches and courtyards in the front. They all have textured, printed concrete driveways instead of just concrete, so that they look very snappy in appearance, very high quality, because what we're finding with both empty nesters and millennials is they want really high design, well-appointed, including their backyard. Even though they're small, they want well-appointed backyards, I think where they can put a small pool, a spa, landscaping, small seating area or grass area, but low maintenance. The concept here is they want to be able to come in and out of their house and have the HOA take care of a lot of the open space maintenance. So that gives them this, this ability to not spend their weekends doing yard work, but still have very highly-appointed yards. And so we've given you a list of all of the new required design enhancements that are part of the zoning and the staff report. Just kind of more of the same, I don't want to keep repeating, but, I think we've covered those. This was just to show that, that strip of landscaping, so that we have essentially tree-lined streets, which is not necessarily common in developments today, but we're going to be putting, installing trees between the curb and the sidewalk and plants, and they're required in number and, in both trees and plants, and then those textured driveways. So you'll have porches coming out, you might have covered porticos coming out, you might have courtyards coming out, and I think as Joe didn't mention, but he does require in the stips, all model homes have to have the porches or courtyards in order to increase the buyer demand for those aspects. Just kind of point that up a little bit more. It was also important for staff and for us to have access from the major streets, Lower Buckeye and Citrus, into these two developments from a pedestrian standpoint, and so we tried to show how you can come through the developments with red arrows coming into the project at cul-de-sac locations, as well as through the project, in order to get from place A, parcel four here up to the park internally, so that you could walk to the park, walk to the school, which we felt were very important features of this plan. Originally, we did have some lots facing onto Magnolia, staff asked us to redesign, we did, so all those have been eliminated, so now you see just landscaping along Magnolia across from the park. This shows the depth of that landscaping, which staff has been talking about. It gets up to 35 feet of required setback. There's a variation in the number of elevations, there are four, the number of color schemes per, and the number of models. So you get, when you multiply it all out, it's about 60 different combinations of homes with offset sidewalks around the perimeters. And this showed the same minimum landscape as you come around corners, so an added bonus there. Oh, this is the one that showed those pedestrian connections directly from the major streets. And this shows the offset of homes and walls.
Can you go back to that, next, yes, just, just give a moment so they can look at that.
So wherever you had a cul-de-sac in both of the projects, and by the way, we're combining this slide so that the, the two parcels, four and six, that are on opposite ends are together here, but wherever, in both cases, we have at least two independent access points from the major street, Lower Buckeye, into the development through pedestrian pathway systems, so that you, if you're walking from off-site, you don't have to go around the development to get in, and these are public access ways. And then from inside, you can get up through to get to the park without having, again, having to go around.
Thank you.
Offsetting, they show the staggering of the walls along the major streets. Again, this just shows the desire we had to have really beautiful homes with courtyards and covered patios that bring the people out to the front of the house, which is kind of the neo-traditional thing what most of us grew up with, but somehow got eliminated through the years, but we're trying to bring that back, and having those textured concrete elements or patterned or tiled makes just a much more enhanced environment with the offset sidewalks. And by the way, I just recently lived in a neighborhood that had offset sidewalks and tree-lined, and it makes a big difference. These are all the open space features of the, of the project within these two four. It doesn't include all the overall parks for the entire project, but we just wanted to highlight the additional tot lots and open space elements within these two parcels four and six. This highlights some of those features of tot lots, play areas, ramadas, barbecues, gathering places, sports fields. These are entry features that kind of draw the people into the projects, which we felt was a big enhancement. We talked with staff after there was a desire to see West Goodyear have its own kind of arbor designation. These are not set in stone, but our idea was to work with staff to kind of furtherance of that concept of an arbor area. So we're back to the original plan. These then fit, I think, well into an overall highly landscaped plan, over 25% landscaping overall with the school site, which has been dedicated, or in the process of being dedicated to the Avondale School District, as well as the park site, which has been designed with staff. We may need a few tweaks here and there, but baseball fields, soccer fields, ramadas and barbecues, and walking areas and paths. Now, the one thing that did bring people out, I guess most of the neighborhood meeting and the planning commission really had, as far as we could tell, nothing to do with parcels four and six, because we're dropping the density, we're lowering the building height, at least on making them variations of ones and twos, and we're adding all sorts of new design enhancements in. But they were the folks in Coldwater Springs to the north who simply didn't want to have any access from this development to Durango, and it was not part of our request. We have no desire to introduce access to Durango, and in fact, in the original case, back in 2005, it was stipulated to be removed, that original access point we did have to Durango, and so it was removed. So there is no vehicular access to Durango. But we do show a, an open space corridor coming down to a park, which then leads down to the major park, public park and school. We thought that was a plus, it was worked out at the time as an acceptable compromise would allow them access to the benefits of this plan, including the park and school. But now it seems to be some sort of impediment. They don't want to have even a gate, and I guess our viewpoint on that is, we put the gate in because it was a stipulation, worked out in 2005, but the city tells us to remove the gate, we'll remove the gate. We don't want to be a hindrance or a problem to these folks who live in the county north of Durango. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. I have a number of speaker cards, so I'm sure everybody in the audience that wanted to speak did give me a card, so I'm going to start out with the individuals. Before I call you up, just to remind you, each speaker is limited to three minutes. The yellow light in the buzzer will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to speak. Before you begin to speak, identify yourself clearly, please, by stating for the record your name and address. So I'll start out, and I apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce your name, but as close as I can come to it. So we have Kimberly Brownmeyer.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Kimberly Brentmeyer. I live at 1802 South 177 Avenue, which is in the Sweetwater Estates, which is directly north of the development that we've been discussing, discussing the La Jolla Vista development. While I don't have any opposition to the amendment that's on the agenda for tonight, it is interesting to me that the final plat was approved for this development back in 2007, I believe, which was over nine years ago, and it's interesting that times have changed, people's needs have changed over the years, which have required us to have the agenda item tonight for the amendment, which is what we actually are seeking as well for our area. The access point into our neighborhood is- The access point into our neighborhood is probably not beneficial to our area. We are a rural community, and with having a park access area, which although is only for pedestrians, would still invite people into our area that aren't familiar with our lifestyle. We have some concerns over visitors in our area since we do not have sidewalks, we do not have bike trails, we don't have street lamps. Like I said, we're a very rural community, and we're just trying to preserve that way of life. As I understand it, the developers or the owners, the landowners, don't have any opposition to not having that access point there. But I also understand that because this has been approved, like I said, more than nine years ago, that it will require action by the council to allow an amendment so that that area can be closed off. You should have access to the petitions that were signed by many homeowners in the area, as well as some of the statements from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that took place several weeks ago. Just our request, my request, is that you consider amending just that one area of the northern side of the development so that there's no access point into our rural area.
Thank you very much. Next person is Phil Miller. All right, thank you. All right, thank you. And the next is Joel, yeah, Joel Suppiler or Spies.
Thank you. Joel Suppley, 1817 South 177th Avenue, Goodyear, Sweetwater Estates. To avoid the possible issues relating to safety, security and legal litigation, we're asking the council of Goodyear and the developer to close the Durango Street access to our Little County Island Sweetwater Estates. This action would avoid the City of Goodyear and developer, excuse me, with a necessary time-consuming and expensive plat amendment. In closing, bridging that access with a block would be a lot cheaper than the future civil litigation the City of Goodyear and the developer will endure, God forbid, if anybody gets injured or killed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. James, is it Bowen?
Pronounced Bane.
Did you say Bane? Beam? Mr. Beam?
Pronounced Bane.
Bane. You were wrong. Bane.
So are you.
I know, but you always tell me I'm wrong, and you're right. So see, we're equal.
Nobody, nobody.
A little jest.
Very, very few people know how to pronounce my name.
Thank you very much. Thank you. See there?
I live at 1726 South 176th Avenue. We moved in there strictly because of the land, an acre and a quarter. We have animals. We like our animals. I live on a street that tees on Durango and on Pima. So no people should actually be coming down my street that live there. But I've taken an account of 50 vehicles going down my street approximately every day of the week and about 75 on the weekends. Now, if this is opened up, now we're going to have people, more people walking. And I have two beautiful dogs, and when people walk down the street, they get aggravated. They wouldn't bite anybody, they just get all worked up. And when we bought the place, I put six-foot windows wide and four-foot high in the front of my house and on my south view. Okay? We can sit in our living room and look at the mountains to the south. With this proposition that they're going to build there, we won't be able to see the mountains anymore because of all the buildings that are going to be there. And I like my privacy. And all the people, about 80% of the people, there's 70 houses in our little subdivision, have signed a petition against this walkway and a street coming out onto our properties. We live in a county. We do not live in the City of Goodyear. What gives the City of Goodyear the right to encroach on our property? And we had dirt streets up until about a year and a half ago, two years ago. And they only put like an inch and a half of blacktop down. And if we get much more traffic that goes up and down our streets, our streets are going to be all tore up. So that's all I've got to say. And God bless you people that are sitting on the council and you, Mayor. And I hope you understand where we stand in our subdivision. I'm 77 years old, 76 years old. I'll be 77 in March. I hope to spend the rest of my life there without problems. I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that's it. Any other speaker cards that are all right? Then I'm going to close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please read ordinance 16-1338 by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number 16-1338 rezoning approximately 38.72 acres generally located at the northeast corner of Citrus and Lower Buckeye Roads, parcel four, 22.45 acres, and at the northwest corner of 173rd Avenue and Lower Buckeye Road, parcel six, 16.27 acres. By amending the La Jolla Vista final planned area development dated June 30, 2005, as adopted by ordinance number 05-971, to change the land use designation for parcels four and six from court homes to detached single-family residential with modified development standards by adopting the La Jolla Vista PAD Amendment, final PAD plan dated October 27, 2016, to govern the development of said parcels four and six, amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for corrections, severability, an effective date and penalties.
Thank you very much. Could I have a motion and a second?
Still move.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilwoman Osborne. Now open for council discussion. Councilwoman Pozillo.
Joe, just a quick question. The gate they're referring to up north, if I'm looking at this correctly, they're not even building there, is that correct?
It's.
Where the gate, the question they're talking about that goes through that green belt, there's nothing there at parcel one and two right now?
Mayor, Lord, Councilman Pozillo, there's, the way it's designed, you would have the open space track that would run in a north-south direction and then flare out. There'd be a wall and a fence along there with an opening to allow pedestrian access as is currently approved.
Well, let me ask it another way. I'm not quite getting it. Where you have that flare out up at the top, up top, okay? Parcel one, parcel two, is there any homes there?
Oh, no, sir. Not at the present time.
So there's nothing being built there. The only things that are being built is down in the corner, correct?
Well.
To the bottom-left corner and the bottom-right corner is what we're talking about.
That, the two parcels, four and six, are what are the subject of tonight's meeting.
Okay. The other question is a follow-up. Who would be using that at this time?
Well, until, obviously until the project is developed, no one's going to be using it because it's not there. As the parcels develop, frankly, the motivation behind providing the access was to, so that residents and future residents of Sweetwater Estates could actually come south to access the public park and in particular, the school site because whether they're residents of Goodyear or the county, they are in the Avondale School District. And at the time, it was considered in 2005, there was a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission was either worked for the school district or was on the board of the school district and felt strongly that there should be a connection so that children from that area could reach the school site. Crystal Timko.
Crystal, you're right. Thank you, boss.
And so that's why the pedestrian connection was, it was felt that it was important to maintain that access. Otherwise, if there are children in the Sweetwater Estates, they would have to basically walk out to Citrus and then down and back around to reach the school site.
No, I understand that. I guess my question is, is regarding that gate, apparently they don't mind doing that because they don't want the gate there. That's my understanding from the residents. So with that being said, would that come back before us again when they started doing parcel one and two, or is it already set as a result of the final plat? That's what I'm not quite understanding.
Mayor, Lord, Councilwoman Pozillo, it's a stipulation of the zoning that there'd be a pedestrian access connection made to Durango Street. And as it is currently approved, it is approved with that access point. So the developer would build that at the time that that area between parcel one and parcel two is developed.
Would it come back before? I guess if I'm understanding it correctly, then without an amendment, it would not come before the city council. Again, they would just build and they'd be required to put that gate up.
That's correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Councilman Pozillo, if I may, as Joe was alluding to it, it was a stipulation from 2005. So it would be required to be adhered to, and the only way it could be changed would be to revise the zoning for La Jolla Vista to delete that stipulation. And that conversation tonight is not relative to the two parcels that are up for consideration tonight. So when Mr. Miller moves forward, that sidewalk going through the fence to Durango would actually be put in and constructed unless the council takes zoning action to delete that stipulation.
But that would be required, or it's not even required, it's not part of this action right now.
No, it is not.
No, it is not.
So for that to happen, it would have to be addressed when they came back and wanted to do parcel one and two, I would assume.
But only through a zoning action, not through a construction activity or plating or replating in terms of that nature.
So that's only if the developer wants to rezone it. It's the only way we're going to hear it.
There's two ways in which it can be considered. One would be a developer-initiated or a property owner-initiated, meaning the developer, or a city-initiated way. We as staff, just to be frank with you, support the sidewalk connection. It makes good sense, as Mr. Schmidt outlined earlier, in having a connection for the residents to get to the public park and to the school. However, if the council thought was supportive of deleting it, then the council has a right to direct staff to move forward, and we would certainly move forward with that revision.
No, I'm just trying to get an understanding here. It really has nothing to do with this particular thing that's on here right now. It's only if, and to me, it becomes an issue again when they start doing parcel one and two. Right now, it's not an issue. Nobody lives there.
Correct. It's not an issue now, and if they just built the development as entitled with the stipulations, it wouldn't even come back up before you. It would only come back before you through a zoning action initiated by the developer or as a council directive.
I'm going to go down here once in a while.
Kind of a point-of-order issue.
Go ahead.
If this isn't part of the discussion for tonight, can we even be talking about this?
I think it's associated enough with the PAD that it falls within that umbrella. What I would say, though, is an amendment to the PAD to address this issue would need to be a separate zoning action.
Yeah, it would be.
It'd be a separate zoning action.
Yeah, so we can't even roll it together, even if we wanted to. We can't make it part of it tonight.
Not tonight. Correct.
No, we can't. But we.
Because you're only, tonight, you're only looking at parcel four and six.
Right. That's my point. So are we even allowed to continue the conversation? But you're saying yes because it's kind of related, but.
It's related to the PAD.
But at the end of the day, we can't even take any action.
Correct.
But I.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're going anywhere.
But the public came before us.
That's no different than if they had come before.
But I totally understand.
At the beginning of the meeting, yeah.
I questioned that before.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks for entertaining.
All right. What's it, who on this side wanted to speak?
I just had two.
All right. Councilman Campbell?
I just had a question, Joe. Since Sweetwater area is a county island, they get no services at all for Goodyear, no water, no police, no fire, no nothing. They're an entity all to themselves, by themselves?
Mayor, Lord, Councilmember Campbell, the only services they would receive would be through the county, so county sheriff.
Through the county, okay. So then their children wouldn't necessarily go to our school?
No, that's a different issue.
No, the school district is separate, is a separate entity, and it's within the school district boundaries.
Okay, so then their children, not necessarily the folks that are living there now, but if younger people were there with small children, those children could go to this school once it's built.
That's correct.
All right, that's all I, that's my only question. Oh, I do want to say that I think it's, I love how the homes are being proposed with porches and courtyards, and I think it will really help make a sense of community because people like to sit out on their porch and visit with their neighbors. And I love the idea that the developer is willing to change as the market changes so that they can move forward with their development. I want to thank them for doing that.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. It's kind of funny to be here during this because I was on planning and zoning in 2005. And I do recall this actual situation. You know, in our city, and especially then, we really were developing quickly, and the thing that we continually wanted every development to do was connect to each other. And that's why you would see accesses because open space and trailways are vital to our city and continue to be. And it's certainly something that citizens everywhere ask for, whether you're in a county island or whether you're, you know, outside of it. You enjoy your open spaces. You enjoy pathways. And I know that those discussions are probably what happened back in 2005, was the access for the school with the kids, I'm sure. And I certainly had kids of that age, and so, and Ms. Timko, who I thoroughly love and enjoy, also had children. And I know that that was vital to what parents feel for their kids. Now, having said that, I understand the side of our rural neighbors. And having an FFA child that everybody knows up here, I understand and I respect that rural atmosphere and the concern of, you know, with all these people around, how will my animals and my lifestyle be protected? So I certainly hear you. As Mr. Stip did try to make everyone understand tonight is regardless of what we want to do, we cannot, in a legal manner, say, put an amendment tonight, put a stipulation in tonight to change it because it's in the process of legality, if I understand correctly, Rourke. This is how it's going to have to play out. We can give our thoughts about it, one way or another, but we can't change it tonight. As for parcel four and six, the changes, you know, looking at our developer, looking at what people want these days and that change, you know, bravo to you that you're keeping up with the trends and that you're building something that, you know, it will be obviously not for a while, but you're looking at changing something that people want. So I appreciate that. Citizens appreciate that. So, you know, I know it's a tough place to be right now. One way or the other, I guess I'm kind of neutral on whether that opening is there. If it's a view fencing, you know, that's fine, or if it's a brick wall. This is something that, you know, good neighbors collaborate with each other on. But that, when I look at where you're talking about children coming from, that's an awfully long way for. an awfully long way for children to be walking or riding to that school site, which you don't typically see too often anymore. So, um, I would be surprised if they were doing that in the first place, quite frankly. But, um, I, I'm neutral on it. I, I will support, um, this change to four and six because I, I think it's appropriate and I appreciate it, and I certainly thank the neighborhood for coming out to let them, let us know their concerns.
Councilman Stip?
I, yeah, before we lose sight of what we're actually here for, I'm in support of the change to four and six. So, Joe, um, I know you don't have control over the PowerPoint presentation, so hopefully Laney's listening, but if you can go back to Joe's presentation and then slide two, I wanna show everybody something. I swear I'm bringing a laser pointer one of these days.
Yeah.
The area that is cotton flower, that has all of those little blue lines in it, that is all developed, single-family, tons of homes in there.
Mm-huh.
Where it's, and it's hard to see, but you see the, see Durango Street there on the, as you're looking at the picture on the left-hand side, that Durango?
Mm-huh.
That Durango dead ends at a block wall. There's a Durango on the other side, but there's a block wall in there. If you go to Google Maps, I've, you know, it, it's there.
Yep.
But it dead ends at a block wall. So that Durango Street doesn't go through and doesn't connect to that other property. And, everything that goes south and then east of there into the La, La Jolla Vista, you know, area, is all block wall. There is not a single connection point between cotton flower and the La Jolla Vista development at all. Not one single connection, and there are probably four times as many homes in there. So, if, if we, we collectively, the city, were not concerned about, and I agree with you on the connection, the trail point connections and all that, but this area was not designed that way. So why are we forcing it into one particular section? And really, what is, is it, is it not a, could it not be an administrative action by the city to move this forward, to get this done? To just say to the developer, hey, what do you think about putting a view wa, a view, a view fence instead of a gate and call it good? And can we move on? Is that possible, or does that take an entire, is that not administratively possible, or does that take council action?
I don't think so, because it was a stipulation.
Defer, do you answer that part of it?
That would take council action.
Okay, so, it would be really simple for us to just generate the paperwork and...
It'd be a rezoning. You'd go through the whole rezoning process.
And we can do that at no cost to the applicant. Or to the developer, I mean, yeah, whatever. So, we can approve this tonight, we can, if...
Well, I'm gonna second this, Mayor. This is, what we're here to do is approve this tonight. We're not here to be working on this. We can, that has to be brought back to us, and it was in the information you read, it was from the, uh, you know, from the planning and zoning. So, yes, we are supposed to be moving this onward. So, we know that we can't do anything tonight.
Right.
So, then, we need to work on this behind, and we need to get on and vote for what we're supposed to be here for tonight.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Let's vote on four and six, and if there's a majority of the council that says, let's get the rest of the action done, let's close that opening and let's move on.
Yes, thank you.
Because there's no point in having the opening if there's no other way to get into the development to get to the park.
I thought you were gonna bring something else in by your, your beginning, your description.
I know, I know, I've got a bad reputation.
It's absolutely where your mayor wanted to go. I wanted to close this up, but you wanted to speak, so I allowed you, so...
No, I, I wanna close it just to say, let's vote on this, and then, if the council says, let's close it off, put in a view fence, give staff direction, and let's...
So what I'm asking for now is roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. We're at seven point two. It's to consider authorizing a grant-in-aid agreement between the Toho No'athum Nations, City, uh, Nation and the City of Goodyear on behalf of the Southwest Lending Closet. Grant administrator Christine McMurty is before us. Christine?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Proposition 202 was passed by voters in 2002 and requires tribal entities to share a portion of their gaming revenues with, uh, local governments through a grant process. Not to exclude nonprofits, they created another process for nonprofits where they can also apply for the same funds, but if their grant request is rewarded, the state requires that they have to pass their award fund through a local government. So, um, this year, the Southwest Lending Closet submitted their application for equipment to the Toho No'athum Nation, and was notified their, their requests would be rewarded as long as they entered into a grant-in-aid agreement, which is before you tonight. Their executive director, Andy Vlomen, Andy Vlomen...
You've got some good stock.
...inkt contacted me to ask if Goodyear would act as the flow-through for that agency, and, um, that is what you're looking at tonight. Just so you know, too, we also applied for the same funds. Uh, we tried very, very hard, this is now the second time, to get our police chief a command vehicle, and they turned us down. You may see that through the budget process, but, um, just wanted you to know about that because, uh, in addition to turning us down, they actually, this year, turned all the West Valley cities down and kind of went all nonprofit, which we've seen them do before. So, we're actually very, very happy that they chose the Southwest Lending Closet, one of our favorite nonprofits. And I'm gonna turn this over to Ann just to say hello, and please feel free to ask her any questions, although I think the work that these folks do speaks for itself. So, Ann?
Welcome.
Thank you. And, uh, for the record, my name is Ann D. Vlomenek.
Hi. Andy Vlomenek.
It's almost as hard as my last, last name, so...
Yeah.
Um, I actually live in the city of Avondale, um, and I don't know if you need my address. So, I'm not here, okay.
You don't have to because she invited you up to this.
Very, very good, so super. So I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, I, I just, one statement to you, it takes a nation to get through this, so thank you very much.
It does.
So, um, I'm gonna, it, there's no speaker's cards except what we had here, okay? So, does anybody want to ask her a question before I, it, we really should wait on it? All right, okay, thank you very much, though. Um, are there any other speaker cards?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, then. Can I have a motion a second to authorize the city manager to execute a grant-in-aid agreement between the Toho No'athum Nation, the City of Goodyear, and the Southwest Lending Closet to pass through a grant award for $4,048.50 to the Southwest Lending Closet from the Toho No'athum Nation? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Osborne, and a second by Councilman Holman. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
First of all, I wanna thank the city. I'm on the Board of Directors along with Ann for the Southwest Lending Closet. Uh, I appreciate the effort that the city did to help process. I know the law is set, so it's gotta come through the city, uh, for the grant before it ends up going to the Southwest Lending Closet, but, uh, we really appreciate all that effort on the Southwest, and I'm sure, uh, Cheryl Holman's gonna wanna say something as well, but we appreciate all those efforts, uh, for the work. Again, it's gonna go to a good cause. As everybody knows, that we lend medical equipment to those in need. So again, thank you very much for everything you're doing to help out the Southwest Lending Closet.
I'm gonna look down here first. Councilman Holman?
Well, I just wanted to say that, um, this is the first grant that I have heard that the nation has granted, and I, um, thank, thank you, Ann, for your perseverance, and it's, it's been real strange. We all get the letters inviting us to apply, uh, and then, the, the rules are floating rules, and so I, I congratulate you for your tenacity, and thank you, Chris, for, for working with her. It's, it's, uh, it is an accomplishment, and I hope it's, uh, it's, it's an open, it opens the door just a little bit for our nonprofits.
The other one for this side, before I go over here. Councilman Stip?
Okay, so I had to, so you really said it takes a nation? Was that like, no pun intended, or what?
That I said.
No pun intended, right?
No, I, I, uh, I, I say from, speaking for myself, that it is a pleasure to be able to do this for our community, so, um, with that, it, it is disappointing that we weren't able to get the police chief a new RV. I'm thinking perhaps a very large tent might...
What?
We'll put in a little, he's got an RV as his, uh, command vehicle right now, so if we can't get the RV, maybe we'll get a tent or something for him, but, um, no, Ann, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations and thank you. So, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna go to the next item on business, and it's to consider approving a contract change, order number four, to the Engineering Design and Construction Administrative Services Contract for Waterworks Engineers. Senior Man, Project Manager Tim Berkeen and Operation Manager Barb Chappell will present. Hello?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'll be here to go over some background information. Do I need to pull up the presentation, or do you pull it up?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
For... Presentation for item seven point three?
I, I don't have anything.
I got a copy of it that I printed out.
Are you talking to us? Do we have a presentation?
Yes, seven point three.
On PowerPoint.
It's not coming up. Oh, you're talking to the, hello? Could we have the presentation put up?
No, huzz.
I got it. Got it right here. Let me share. Got it right here. Okay. I don't have my computer on. I'm gonna look for it. We apologize for this delay. So we don't have it? It's not coming up? The presentation? Go ahead.
We can go, we'll just go without if that's...
Thank you.
That's perfect.
Okay. All right, sorry. So I'm Barb Chappell, I'm the Utility Operations Manager for Public Works, and, um, I just wanted to give you a brief background on the project this evening. The, uh, Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility, also known as the 157th Avenue Facility, is, has been undergoing an expansion from four million gallons per day to six million gallons per day. The expansion was, uh, done in packages, so we kinda had them done in pieces. Uh, we've completed through packages five and six, and then, uh...
Five, six, seven is the...
And seven. Eight A is currently under construction, which included, thank you. Um, Eight A, you may have remembered, included some headwork screens and the remediation of the old shooting range that was there at the facility. Uh, that, we're still under construction of the, the headwork screens, and we're also in the process of designing the final four to six expansion. Additionally, during the rate study, there were some projects identified for the facility to help improve our solids handling, and those were listed as three separate projects. We found it beneficial, if we could bundle it all together, leverage the knowledge and the experience that our firm, the engineering firm has with the facility, and do this all as one large project and complete those rate projects along with the four to six expansion. And so that's why we're here tonight requesting our, uh, change order for the project, and I'm gonna let Tim take over from here, and he'll go over some more of the specifics on how we're gonna build the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lord, Council. Uh, as Ms. Chappell said, my name's Tim Berkeen, I'm the Senior Project Manager in Engineering. The scope of this change order is in two parts. The first part, $382,812 for construction administration services for package H8B, which is the remainder of the expansion improvements. The construction administration also includes, uh, Waterworks acting as the engineer of record for the project, meeting permitting and regulatory requirements, construction engineering services, startup and commissioning, and producing record drawings. The construction administration was anticipated, but the encumbrance of these funds was deferred until this year, now that we're getting closer to, uh, constructing the improvements. The design for the solids handling improvements, the, the rate portion of the, of the improvements, for the amount of $219,982, also includes all of the regulatory review and permitting required for, for those improvements, as the solids handling. Waterworks Engineers was selected for the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility Expansion as the most qualified firm for the expansion project, and they are the most qualified firm to design the solids handling improvements. The total negotiated engineering fees for this project are roughly 12% of the construction costs, and construction admin services breaks down to about 3%, and these costs fall, uh, well, within the acceptable industry standards for a project of this size and scope. This request is change order number four to the contract, uh, and just for some background, council previously approved change orders one and two, which were no-cost change orders that clarified design parameters and extended the expiration date of the contract. Change order three allowed the city to completely remediate the contaminated soil at the old police shooting range, and it also included construction admin services for package eight A, uh, which was the headwork screen, which is being constructed as we speak. Funding for all the elements of this project was anticipated and included in the fiscal year 2017 capital improvement plan, and this scope is within the approved budgets for So, we are here to recommend, uh, that council approve change order number four to the Engineering Design and Construction Administ, Administration Services Contract for Waterworks Engineers in the amount of $602,794, to amend the total contract amount to $1,645,941, to extend the contract term for up to two additional years in one-year increments, and authorize the purchase order to be amended.
Thank you very much, and thank you for contending with what went on this evening. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody like to speak?
Mayor Lord, uh, for your information, Waterworks does have representatives here.
Oh.
Barb and I can answer questions, and if you have any questions for them, they're available also.
We may get back to you in just a moment. Thank you very much. Um, could I have a motion in a second to approve $602,794 Contract Change Order Number Four to the Existing Engineering Design and Construction Administration Services Contract with Waterworks Engineers, Inc.? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Heard a motion from Councilman Stip, and a second from Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion, so you know that we have people here that can answer any of your questions. So, anybody down here before I go right? Councilman Campbell?
Uh, my question, is this going to be the last change order on this project, or are we going to see more coming down the pike?
Uh, Councilmember Campbell, Mayor Lord, uh, this is for the complete package of the project. The next time you will see us will be, uh, sometime late in the summer, when we come back to you with the construction project.
Okay. Not that we don't like to see you, that's not, I don't wanna put you there.
I understand the question.
Okay, so, and, and so the final design or the final cost is the 14 million? Or are we adding the 1 million to that, that we just are, well, we're increasing the contract by...
The 14 million?
Yeah.
Also includes all of the improvements that have already been constructed. We've already built about $3 million, just a little over $3 million in improvements...
Right.
...in the ground right now, and we still have roughly $11 million of construction.
Left to go. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Councilman Stip?
Just a, uh, I think a point for the public, um, that the funds available for this project are, have already been identified as coming from the capital improvement program.
Thank you.
Uh, through a number of projects, which I assume are either all rolled together, or...
That was bundled, right?
There's, uh, one, two, three, four, five.
They're, they're still listed separate, but they're in the capital improvement program. Some were rate, um, part of the rate program that was adopted last October, and then some were related to our growth.
So this is part of...
The expansion portion is...
It's already part of the plan.
Yes, it's in the CIP.
This isn't 600,000 of new...
No, it's not. It's all in the CIP.
Beautiful, thanks.
The, the council adopted CIP.
Thank you, Councilman Stip, for clearing that up. Okay, any other? Okay, let's vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, good evening.
All right, we're going to 7.4. And the business item, Consider Approving an Expenditure for a Special Project Fund Requested from the Veteran Success Project. Governmental Relationship Manager Rob Boer will present. Welcome, Rob.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Looks like I have my presentation out. So, you will all remember back last summer, Mr. Stevie Yamamori with the Maricopa Community College District Foundation was here and presented extensive information about his West Valley Center for Military and Veteran Success Project that he's been working with many of the cities on to get funding for that center. He's, Steve's here again tonight. And he'll be happy to answer any questions specific to the project after I get done with my very brief presentation here. So, again, so the request that you're considering tonight would be $30,000 from your Special Projects Fund that would go towards the West Valley Center for Military and Veteran Success. That's the building where he would, we would be located to start with. And that's there at the base on the east side of Litchfield Park. And you'll see a map here on the next slide. But the center itself would just provide a one-stop shop access to all different types of support services for veterans, including, as you see there, education, housing, financial services, et cetera. So, here you get a little bit of a layout. It's Building 1153, which is the former visitor center there at the base. But it is no longer used for their purposes. It's, like I said, on the east side of Litchfield Road. The great thing is it's accessible without the base pass. Just over 1,500 square feet and also accessible from public transportation. Just a quick breakdown here. This is the city portion of the funding towards the project. And it's based on estimated number of veterans throughout the entire West Valley. So, they estimate that we're just over 114,000 veterans throughout the whole West Valley. So, then, obviously, the percentage breakdown, with Goodyear having about 6% of that would be... And then, the dollar amount shows the entire five-year amount. But of course, what you're considering tonight would just be that first year, the $30,000. And as I said, it's a very brief presentation, but Steve is here and he's happy to answer any questions. And I know he would like to come up and acknowledge your consideration at the end as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody like to come up and speak? Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. And Rob, thank you for doing that wonderful summary.
State your name, please, just for the record.
My name is Steve Yamamori. I'm the Vice President of Maricopa Community Colleges Foundation, working on the Veteran Success Project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just stay right there and you might get some of those, okay? So, since, could I have a motion in a second, please, to approve the expenditure of $30,000 to the West Valley Center for Military and Veteran Success Project from the City Council's Special Project Fund? Second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear who made the motion. Councilman Osborne? No, Councilman Campbell made the motion and Vice Mayor made this second. So, now, open for council discussion and you may get some questions, Steve. Councilman Pizzillo?
Just kind of a high-level summary. Where are you at right now in this entire process?
I appreciate it, sir. We are actually right now, I believe, the license agreement will be signed tomorrow by the general at Luke Air Force Base. We are extremely excited to tell you that the Luke Air Force Base, along with this community coalition that we've built, will be running a pilot program at Luke Air Force Base so that every airman who is transitioning out of Luke Air Force Base will come to us and be evaluated and have a basic success plan built for them before they go through the Transition Assistance Program on base. So, that means that we are going to have a chance to at least chat and develop a plan for 450 to 500 airmen every year for the next four years. And I can't tell you what that means from a metrics and a measurement standpoint, because that data is not out there on a national level. So, what we're going to be able to do is to have a sort of a nation, a national model with data and measurements to find a better path for transition for our military members.
Thanks, thanks, Steve.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you, Steve. I know your passion. And I thoroughly support this initial funding that we're giving. But that, I do have a clarifying question for you, Rob. So, the total ask was 150 million. I just wanted to...
150,000?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Even I caught that one.
Thank you, thank you. Steve goes, yes!
Yeah, I caught that one.
Yes, okay, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, 150,000 with a T, that, for five years. Are we agreeing to the one year and then we're looking at the next years? Is that what we're doing? I just wasn't sure. Or we are, this, we're funding the first 30, but we've agreed to the five? That I wasn't clear on.
Right, Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, great question. So, we determined that the best way to move forward would just be to take it...
Year to year.
Year by year basis. So, you would only be acting on the first year, $30,000. If you decided to consider a future year, that would just be something that you could request as a council and we could consider it at that moment.
All right, well, I know this will be successful, so I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Here. Oh, Councilman Campbell?
Thank you. Steve, as you know, I serve on the Military Communities Council. I'm a charter member with the National League of Cities. And this is very dear to my heart for many reasons. I do understand that in the population, roughly, we have 6,000 military in Goodyear. Not all of them claim Arizona as their home, but they are here living. I would be interested to know in a year how many Goodyear residents you serve. You've just shared the news that the general is now going to allow you to talk to those airmen and officers that will be separating from the service before they actually go through the military separation, briefings that they have to do. And not all of those folks are going to be from Goodyear.
Absolutely.
So, you may not have very many from Goodyear at all for the next couple of years. So, I'd like to see the metrics on that. I've shared with you several other veteran success programs from all over the country that they have done. And I will tell you honestly, no one has a budget like you have asked us for, nor do they expend that amount of money. So, I really want to see the facts and the figures. And for the first year, I'm okay with it. But I just want to see what else happens. And I am leaving in the morning for Pittsburgh. And I have my first Military Communities Council meeting on Wednesday morning. So, I'll share your news with my cohorts of what we're doing and see how that works out.
Wonderful. And just to comment on that, thank you...
You're welcome.
For the work that you're doing on a national level. And just to, the clarifying point is that we are taking this, these dollars to be in an endowment so that this can move on and will be a sustainable program and a legacy program in the West Valley. So, absolutely, we are trying to be very judicious with our money. By working with Luke Air Force Base and having them not charge us rent, we are doing the best we can to be as efficient with the dollars that you are so generously potentially offering.
Oh, and we understand that. And there are a lot of veteran success programs. And I'm using your words, unfortunately. There are other types of veteran outreach. It's all throughout Maricopa County and all throughout the greater Phoenix area. And it seems that every single one of them offers something different. And we, of course, for our West Valley portion is going to offer something that none of the others do, because we have the base in our backyard. That's what's exciting.
Yes. And you're absolutely right, because we will have access to airmen.
Yes.
And to your point, I was able, and I received a nice booth to be able to talk to Goodyear residents at the Veterans Day event. And it was wonderfully...
Good.
The event was fantastic. And we were able to talk to veterans in Goodyear.
Wonderful.
And I promise to continue to do that kind of outreach in Goodyear so that we can speak. And in a year, I would love to come back with you, to you, and present you with some hard numbers.
I'm going to interject in there. We still will have the people living in Goodyear that will come out.
Well, we do.
I mean, the base has been generous about helping us with this program to begin with.
Yeah.
But I've already talked to several and I know they're going to be knocking at your door, so...
So, it'll be wonderful to see what you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Councilman Holman?
Steve, I just have a quick question. And this is more curiosity. The list of cities, have you had a confirmation from a number of them as well?
Yes, I have confirmation from everyone that they are excited to support this effort. I have confirmation letters from six of the 11 communities around Luke Air Force Base, omitting Sun City and Sun City West because they do not have a municipality. So, we will be running individual campaigns and donation campaigns in those two cities.
Congratulations. Thank you. Well, lastly, I thank you. I thank you as a past, you know, military spouse. I'm still the spouse and we're still a bit tired in the military sense. But we didn't have those programs. We just didn't have them. And we struggled getting out of the military and adjusting to civilian life and all the changes. And it was pointed out this week at an event that I was at that back in the days that when we were released from the military or retired, people would not hire military people. The big statement was, well, they only know how to shout out orders. They don't know how to do anything else. And so, to get a good position, and you would think it would, an officer and educated would be able to do that, was very, very difficult unless you had a real specialty in the military that might have gotten you a job. So, thank you. I think this is great. And I do think that actually, it'll fill some of our jobs in Goodyear. And I'm looking forward to that. So, I thank you very much for this. So, with all this conversation, let's go ahead and vote for it. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Mayor, Council, thank you so much.
Okay, now's the time for council. You have comments, commendation, or reports on your current events? Yes.
I just wanted to share one thing. I was so proud to bring a World War II veteran, Joe Bonavere, who is my neighbor, to the veterans event. And I can't tell you how thrilled he was on the way home that he kept telling me, "They shook my hand, they acknowledged me, I thought they forgot all about me." And he is the only living World War II veteran left in Pebble Creek. I don't know about Goodyear. But God willing, I'll have him back at the veterans event next year if he's well enough to do it with me.
Thank you. Councilman Holman?
I too wanted to make a comment about the veterans. The sculpture was unveiled that was designed by the veterans and to honor all the veterans, no matter which branch they served in. And I had a comment just this morning from someone who was there on Friday. And she was just, she was in awe. She loved the presentation. She loved what people had to say. And she loved our sculpture.
So nice. No others, I'm going to do what I've told you I'm going to do, is Major, the Mayor's Weekly Review. And we will continue this, so everybody is aware that the mayor is working and the public will. I was at a meeting at the Australian Mountain Community College with the local Arizona, but Local First Arizona, to learn more about the FURZA. It's an interesting name. Local Business Accelerator Program. We attended the Care Bear Annual Luncheon, Wally and I did. The Veterans Day Celebration, of course, celebrated the 241st birthday of our U.S. Marine Corps. I did that with Paul Smiley's office with the staff of Sonoran Technologies. I attended the Westmark Annual Best of the West Awards, along with many of you, at the Phoenix Stadium. It was an absolutely fantastic evening. A ceremony celebrating the donation of a beautiful home to a Goodyear resident and U.S. Army Staff Sergeant Joseph Moncrief and his family, thanks to the very generous Meritage Homes on Veterans Day. So, this builder is now building homes for vets. The family make applications and then they determine... And there is an organization, which I forgot the name of it, that runs this, the 501(c). And of course, it was, the event at the Veterans Day, Goodyear Park, was meaningful. And Colonel Tolliver was really excited about being recognized. He had no idea we were actually going to talk about him. So, very pleased. And then, Wally, you didn't you say about the Pebble Creek Home Tour? Okay, so you need to say something before that. I'll tell you that, and that I attended Arts and Autumn Gala. And I'm going to let Cheryl in home and tell her about that. So, Wally, you go first.
Okay, the Pebble Creek Home Tour was Saturday afternoon from 12 to 5:00. We sold out for the ninth consecutive year. And we raised a little over $9,000. We're still counting the money. And it all goes to Shop With a Cop. And we're not sure how we're going to handle it quite next year because it falls on Veterans Day, which is the second Saturday of the month. And I'm sure the city will be doing a Veterans Day event.
I'm sure.
Most likely. So, we'll probably move it a week ahead or a week later. But it was very successful and I want to thank...
Did you get a big donation besides the...
Oh, my gosh, yes. One of our homeowners gave me a check for $2,500 for Shop With a Cop. And we're just very grateful for that donation. We're very grateful that the homeowners opened their home for this wonderful tour. We're grateful for the 950 people who bought tickets. And a lot of them bought tickets and didn't go, but they just wanted to make the donation because they knew it was all going to offer or to help our officers take a needy Goodyear child shopping for Christmas. So, it's an annual event. I've been chair for the past 11 years. And I've enjoyed every minute. So, that's all I did.
Cheryl, thank you. Cheryl, but please tell about the art gallery because I was stunned. I didn't take Ron because I said, oh, it'll be crowded. It's just one small room. And so, I had him stay home and I went. And so, I was astounded at what they've done. It's absolutely marvelous. So, go ahead and...
And I am just, well, I'm not disappointed in that more people weren't able. It's such a busy time of the year. But we have an art gallery on Western Avenue. And the theory of the gallery is a little bit different. It's to bring artists to another level of business people and as well as learning how to show their art. We now, this year, the gala was to celebrate our reopening. We do close for two months in the summer and do...
What's the name of it?
Oh, I'm sorry, Catitudes. Thank you. And this was the gala for the reopening. We do youth programs during those two months that we're closed. And we have 29 artists on display. And what has happened, this is the third year. What has happened is the owner, Bonnie Mostert Lewis, has doubled the size of the gallery. And so, that's what our mayor was surprised at because we had all kinds of room. And the artists are professional. And it is a multimedia kind of thing that they have. There's metal artists, there's wood artists, there's oil paintings, there's jewelry makers. It's many, many, many different categories of art. And so, I thank you for this opportunity. 404 East Western is the Catitudes Art Gallery. And it is a community gallery. It is meant for all. And there are two artists every day demonstrating their art in the gallery so that you can visit any day and learn something brand new. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. City Manager, anything, any announcements for us?
Mayor and Council, just a couple of things. One is, is thank you for the comments on the Veterans Day event. Really, it was a special day. And we had 650 folks that were in attendance. So, on a workday for a lot of folks and being able to give of their afternoon for that. But just a great event. So, thank you for your words on that. The other is a reminder, this Wednesday, 9:30 to 11:30, Harkins is going to host Star Geared for Growth. our Geared for Growth event, and that is one where Harkins gave us an op, we asked him if we could hold it there, and they said yes, and they gave us like a day, specific day that would work within their schedule, and that's this Wednesday. So, it's a great opportunity to meet with local and, and regional business leaders. We're looking forward to that. You did get an email tonight from Michelle Laurie, our Economic Development Director, that goes through some of the details on it, but our, the speeches will start themselves just after 10 o'clock in the morning, and we do have general manager of the Harkins has agreed to talk also. He's really excited about this project, and it's a household name. You'll remember this one. His name is Jason Householder. Sorry, I couldn't resist that one. And I'll, I'll, I'll hold for applause or laughter. Certainly, our mayor, economist Jim Rounds, who is very well-respected as an economist, and then Michelle Laurie will close out the event and talk about some of the accomplishments this past year, but look forward to it. It's a great time for networking with the business community, so if you have an opportunity to be there, again, Harkins availed us to this one day, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Before I turn this over to council, yeah, and council, it'd be nice for you to attend, and some of you do when you have time, but I want you to know, it's not just the mayor's up there talking, it's not just the mayor's accomplishment, it's the council's accomplishment, it's the staff's accomplishment, it's the city's accomplishment. They call it, you know, they call the mayor up front, and she's standing there, or he's standing there, but it's really a we, and so it's going to be really some surprises. You've just got, I think you're really going to enjoy it, so I hope I see all you there. Does council have any inquiries to staff? Councilman Stiff?
The discussion about the gate.
I'm sorry?
The discussion about the gate.
The gate.
At La, on Durango that we just got done. Are we going to, we going to be able to provide direction on that? Is that a future agenda item?
Can you, I can't hear you, you're kind of mumbling.
The, I think I'm choking to death over here. The gate on Durango that we spent all that time talking about tonight, are we, did we come to some resolution that we, I mean, did the manager here...
I don't know if I can, can I, I don't think I can say...
We really can't discuss that we haven't got our future agendas items... No, I understand. So, I'm asking the question of the manager, what did you hear tonight, and is that item going to come forward?
Mayor and Councilmember Stiff, there was discussion certainly about it. I did not get a clear consensus from some of the discussion going on, and in talking with the attorney as well, so certainly those things can come back for council. We're setting up a process that is going to help that out as well, that at the end of council meetings, if there is a desire to put something on the agenda, and I believe that comes before them next Monday?
Next week, yes.
Yeah, next week. So, exactly for some of those purposes, but it didn't appear there was clear consensus on going forward on that zoning amendment, at least from management.
And we still have, let me put it this way, if it, if council desires that's what they want to do, and there's three people that want to do it, you can put it on the agenda. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
All right, that's, that's the way we handle that one, okay? All right? Councilman Osborne?
This evening, we had the issue with Oregano's, and I understand that was a learning, you know, aspect for everybody, but I also believe we have another restaurant in town that's wanting to expand, so with that knowledge, can we also be proactive with them, just in case they don't know? Thank you. I didn't, I didn't think I should say who it is, so that's why.
For public knowledge?
Do we know it's going to...
No. Okay. See, so, glad I didn't say it.
Not yet for public knowledge, but we'll absolutely have that conversation with them. And, and again, it's something, we asked them a question, it's state-controlled, but I'm getting ahead of our attorney right now.
Okay, well, the, the next meeting will be work session, regular meeting on November 21st. The meeting's adjourned.
We have to go back to our work.
Just sit here.
Did you say you're not calling?
You're not calling.
Are we done?
No, we're, we're...
Limon, you have to go back for the work session, all right?
Can we take a break, please?